Good evening and welcome to the May 15th, 2017 Regular Meeting of the Mayor and City Council. First item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite Haley Bugbee from Strawberry Knoll Elementary to come lead us in the pledge. If everyone could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Haley, good job. Next we have the reflection and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Tonight we have three sets of minutes, the first being from the regular meeting on April 3rd. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the approval of the minutes from April 3rd.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries four to zero. Next we have the minutes from the budget work session held on April 24th. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the approval of the minutes of the budget work session held April 24th, 2017.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four to zero. Next we have the minutes from the work session on May 8th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move approval of the May 8 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four to zero. Next we have appointments and we have a few appointments and reappointments. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move a resolution of the City Council confirming your appointments and a reappointment to the Community Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Environmental Affairs Committee, and the Multicultural Affairs Committee. To the Multicultural Affairs Committee, a two-year term to Jose Contreras, term to expire in May 2019. That's a reappointment. New appointments to the Community Advisory Committee for two-year terms, Barbara Harbison, term to expire in May 2019, and Devon Strick, same expiration, May 2019. And to the Cultural Arts Committee Advisory Committee, a two-year term, Jim Rolfs, term to expire in May 2019. And the Environmental Affairs Committee, a two-year term, Paula Vinca, his term to expire in May 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I know some of those, would anybody whose name we just read, please stand up and just introduce yourself and tell us what committee we're just appointed to.
I'm Barbara Harbison, the Community Advisory Committee.
I'm Devon Strick, Community Advisory Committee.
Jim Rolfs, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee.
Paula Vinca, Barbara Harbison.
Excellent. We are grateful to all of you for your service. Let's give them a round of applause. And next we have an appointment to the Board of Supervisors of Elections. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move the resolution to confirm your appointment to the Board of Supervisors of Elections for William Albright as an alternate, term to expire in May 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. We will call you up momentarily because we're going to swear you in Bill. Next we have more appointments and reappointments. This is to the Board of Appeals. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the resolution of the Council confirming appointments and reappointments to the Board of Appeals. New appointment to Ashley Manuel, term to expire in May 2020. And Aaron Kotok, term to expire, it's a reappointment, term to expire in May 2020.
And a reappointment, next page.
I'm sorry, reappointment is Robert Chiswell, I almost forgot Robert. Term to expire in May 2020.
Second.
We have three seconds on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Would anybody whose name we just mentioned, except for Robert, please, please rise and tell, introduce yourself. Ashley, I see you.
I'm Ashley Manuel and I was just appointed to the Board of Appeals.
Let's give Ashley a round of applause. Robert, we're going to get to you in a second too. So now, if Bill Albright could join me at the podium and we will do his oath. And Bill, if any family members who want to join you are welcome to be up here for this.
My wife and daughter.
Please. You come over here. You, how are you? You guys coming over here? Hi. Okay, so if you would face me, raise your right hand. Start off by saying aye and then you'll state your name. Aye?
Aye, William Albright.
Do affirm?
Do affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be?
And that I will be.
Faithful and bear true allegiance?
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Board of Supervisors of Elections?
Board of Supervisors of Elections.
As an alternate member?
As an alternate member.
According to the United States?
According to the United States.
And Maryland constitutions?
And Maryland constitutions.
The laws of this state?
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code?
And the Gaithersburg City Chartering and Code.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We got a couple of people to sign. Let me go get my pen. Okay.
That's good.
Right here.
Can I have like 50 book festival pens in your pocket?
Oh, he only has the bookmarkers.
Excellent. If I can't write in a sec, we'll make it official.
Don't let him take your pens though.
Thank you.
Okay, if you'd like to, you're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like, or we'll just say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
One picture with everybody. Let's go to the left. Everybody move to the left. Okay. Doris, that's for you. Okay, I'd like to invite Robert Chiswell and any family members who'd like to join him up here.
Come on, family.
Okay, good to see you. Please, come on up. Okay, so Robert thinks that I'm about to swear him in, but actually, the Board of Appeals does not require an oath. We, you know, it's sort of an optional thing. Actually, I wanted to bring Robert and his family here for another reason.
That's why the officer's here.
Robert is the owner of Gaithersburg Rental Center, which is a true institution in this city. Gaithersburg Rental Center has been a family business, meeting the needs of the local community for 50 years. Robert's grandfather started in the building located at 219 East Diamond in 1937 as manager of Thomas Hardware. His dad purchased the business in 1955 and turned it into the rental center that grew into what, the one we know and love in 1967. So Robert is the third generation Chiswell, who began working in the shop in 1981 after graduating from the University of Maryland, bought the business in 94 and the building in 2007. The shop has served the community with quality rental equipment to save, that's an understatement, and knowledgeable personnel for decades. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to dedicate today as Gaithersburg Rental Center Day in the city of Gaithersburg. And I'm going to read the proclamation from the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg designating May 15th, 2017 as Gaithersburg Rental Center Day in the city of Gaithersburg. In honor and celebration of your 50th anniversary and in recognition of your commitment to carrying on a family legacy that has literally helped build Gaithersburg into the wonderful community that it is today, congratulations. On this momentous occasion, proclaim this 15th day of May, 2017, signed by me, Robert. You want to say a couple of words, or?
I'm happy to be here.
Go ahead, say a couple of words.
That just sent me a couple, very surprised, but we appreciate the community's support of our small business as compared to some of the big businesses that come in into the city and everything, but we're pleased to have been able to stay around and my wife, my mom, the rest of my families have always been a big support of us, so I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like to invite Michelle Potter to join me up here and I'm going to let her explain National Kids to Parks Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am joined by Billy Schrack, Director of Youth Programs for the National Park Trust. National Kids to Parks Day is an annual day of nationwide play organized by the National Park Trust to engage young people nationally with parks and public lands, fostering awareness and appreciation for the great outdoors. The Trust endeavors to preserve and protect our nation's parklands, encourage young people to reconnect with nature, and to showcase the beauty and riches of our parks through encouraging and active lifestyle. Last year, the city of Gaithersburg was one of 1,130 park events across the country, and our mayor and city council were amongst 420 mayors and elected officials who proclaimed the day and joined in on the celebration. National Kids to Parks Day is always the third Saturday, which happens to coincide with another event that I'm certain that the mayor will talk about, the Gaithersburg Book Festival, held on the grounds of City Hall and actually in a park, Griffith Park. Please join us this Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. National Kids to Parks Day supports the national motto, "Active kids are healthy kids." Providing an opportunity for children to engage in active play is essential to cultivating their well-being and encouraging children to participate in regular physical activity can lay a foundation for a lifetime of physical fitness. There will be numerous activities for children during the 8th Annual Gaithersburg Book Festival. We invite you all to visit one of the 27 city parks each and every day, not just this one day on Saturday. And a quick fun fact that I got off of the National Park Trust website, if you add all the protected areas of the United States, national, state, and local parks, you get an area larger than France and Spain combined. In other words, there are a lot of American parks to explore, so let's get started.
And our official proclamation, whereas the 7th Annual Kids to Parks Day is organized and launched by the National Park Trust, and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades, and whereas children should be encouraged to lead more active lifestyles to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, moleitis, I hope I said that right, hypertension and hypercholesterolemia, and whereas, these are some of the best words I've had in proclamations, and whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore, I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim May 20th, so Saturday, as National Kids to Parks Day in the city of Gaithersburg, and encourage our community to make time to visit a neighborhood, state, or national park. Proclaim this 15th day of May, 2017, and signed by me. And thank you for receiving.
Thank you.
Michelle, are you up here for the next one? Yes, you're still up here. Yeah, okay, so Michelle, Jim McGuire, Dave Luddington, Alana Scott, and Matthew Bugbee, if everyone could please join me up here. Okay, we're going to let Dave Luddington do the read.
Hello, everyone, I'm Dave Luddington, I'm the Senior Program Supervisor for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Culture for Sports. Some of you may not know, our city department took on the initiative this year to try to get March as Good Sportsmanship Month in the state of Maryland. And while doing that, people were asking me, what is good sportsmanship? And the best answer I could get was trying to teach ethics to an eight-year-old, how to act, how to handle themselves in different types of situations, and teach them the proper responses and most times without them knowing that they're learning, sort of like putting vegetables in their fruit smoothie. And we try to get them to go the right way. Well, let me tell you, someone who exemplifies this is our 2016 Good Sports Player of the Year, Elena Scott. Elena is a fifth grader, she's been playing basketball, soccer, and softball for as long as she can remember, and she is noted on the team for always assisting and helping the other players on the team. She assists with the coach in preparations for all the games and practices, and she's always there with an encouraging word for all of her teammates. She's an incredible role model, not only on our teams during the sports, but also in our school where she participates in green team, and also in other neighborhood activities, making our community clean and safe. So, our department here in our city is very proud to honor this year our 2016 Good Sports Player of the Year, Elena Scott. You can stay up here, just stand there. There you go. All right, and the city, our department especially impacts me greatly, is lucky to have, we have over 200 individuals volunteer their time to the youth in our city, our coaches. We couldn't do our programs without them. They volunteer over 17,000 hours annually to help our youth be able to play the games and enjoy and develop their lives. Now, coaches are known as one of the most significant individuals to impact on a youth's life, okay, that beyond their parents and their peers. And if you can imagine, if their mentorship causes just one child to make the right decision at the right time, what a benefit that is to our community. It's amazing. One shining example of this leadership is our 2016 Good Sports Coach of the Year. Matt Bugbee's been coaching in the city for what we would consider relatively short time of four years, but in those years, he's coached almost every sport the city has to offer. I haven't seen him out there in track and field yet. We're working on that. He's instilled a sense in his team of responsibility and citizenship. Once during the baseball season, Matt wanted to work with his kids and develop them, he needed more equipment to do that, so he wanted to go out and get on his own. However, in his sense of fair play, he didn't think it was fair just for his team to have it, so he bought the additional equipment for every team in the league. He and his wife Sarah have instilled that sense of fairness in their kids and also in the people that they touch, in their youth that they touch while with his coaching. And so that is why we are very proud to have him as our 2016 Coach of the Year, Matt Bugbee.
You're welcome to. No, I leave that for the field, so I talk a lot there, so. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to invite Vicki Mostrom and Beth Kennington from the Lakelands Park PTSA, and Jake Hurstam, our Community Facility Manager from our Parks and Rec Department to, for the next.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
Oh, would you like to?
Sure.
Please.
Sure. On March 10th, 2017, the Lakelands Park Middle School Parent Teacher Student Association held its 11th Annual Basketball Night for Charity at the school. City of Gaithersburg staff serves as referees for this event annually. This week, this year Jake Hurstam, that's me, Community Facility Manager for Parks and Rec Department of Gaithersburg, served as the play-by-play announcer. The Lakelands PTSA intends for the donations to stay local within our community, hence the Dolores C. Sawyer Camp Scholarship Fund, which provides full and partial financial assistance to city families, was selected as the beneficiary. The PTSA raised $700 to contribute to the fund.
Well, we do have a check to give you.
Okay, okay. All right, well, let's hold it up. You guys need a close-up for this one.
Yeah, you're going to want to hold your finger over that.
Yes.
We got to get you guys like one of those cardboard checkbooks. Thank you so much.
It's a beautiful cause. Doris, Jake? Okay. Thanks to everyone, those were some great presentations, very inspiring. Dave, Dave Luddington, I really appreciate the stories that you share about your awardees, it's great. Next, we have public comments. This is the time when the Mayor and Council like to hear from anybody who wants to speak on any topic that's not a public hearing topic, and that's pretty easy because we have no public hearings tonight. So, anybody who wants to speak for up to three minutes on any topic, you are welcome to do so. We ask that you keep your, that you state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. When your time's down to 30 seconds, the timer will beep and turn yellow, when your time's up, it'll beep and turn red. Do we have any speakers this evening? Come on up, please. And anybody else, please feel free to line up.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Sunday and I'm part of the relatively new Summit Hall Reserve community next over to Borah Park.
Sure.
And my neighbors and I were generally a huge fan of the fireworks taking place in Borah Park last year, but the parking situation was kind of a big mess and a bit of a fire hazard. Visitors to the neighborhood took to parking in one lane of a two-lane street, basically trapping people in their cars during the fireworks. If a fire department needed to get into the community or an ambulance or anything, no one would have been able to get through. And I just wanted to make sure that it was brought to your attention, perhaps so someone could help mitigate those issues, because generally, we were a big fan of it, so, thank you.
Great, appreciate your testimony. Tony, you're taking note of that, and I see Michelle Potter, our Director of Parks and Rec, whose department oversees the event, is taking notes too. So, I don't know if you guys are prepared to speak to that particular issue yet at this point, but you have the, you have the feedback. Michelle, I see Michelle coming up.
So, we evaluated what occurred last year, and there are some new changes in place for this year, and staff has been meeting on a regular basis, but I will absolutely let them know about this issue in particular, to put on the radar.
Fairbanks Drive.
Fairbanks Drive, got it.
Thank you, okay.
Thanks so much.
Do we have any other speakers this evening? Okay, not seeing any. We will move on to from the Mayor and Council, and tonight we are starting with Council Member Spiegel.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to go over a few events that have happened over the last couple of weeks since our last formal meeting, so you know what we've been up to here. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, which is sort of the regional umbrella organization that coordinates between different municipal, county, state, and federal government entities in the DC metropolitan area. We had our monthly Board of Directors meeting and we had a very interesting presentation about Metro, which has been a really big focus of the organization over the last year or two with all of the challenges in terms of safety, in terms of funding, in terms of long-term planning to make sure that Metro remains viable as an economic development engine of our region, as well as, you know, simply just a transportation system that people rely on throughout the region. The governor of Virginia has actually hired on behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia, the former Secretary of Transportation for the federal government, to conduct an independent review of Metro at the same time that various other entities are also reviewing Metro. So, it's just sort of one more layer of review, one more set of eyes to take a look at ways that we can address those problems. Two of the big issues being focused on right now by this independent review that Virginia is conducting are funding, what recommendations might come out of that to figure out how to deal with the huge funding gap for capital improvements to the system over the course of the next 10 years, as well as the governing structure of Metro, which is kind of convoluted right now with the Board of Directors that is appointed by different governments in the region and some involvement of the federal government as well. So, stay tuned, as those reviews finish up and as we have more to report on what some of the recommendations are, we'll bring those back to you all so that you know what the Council of Governments is up to, but I did want to raise that. Also, at the Council of Governments, we had an annual report on the state of homelessness in the various government jurisdictions around the DC area. We've made a lot of progress in Montgomery County. I had the opportunity to talk in particular at the Council of Governments Board meeting about the partnership between the city government, the county government, and the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, which is a wonderful nonprofit organization for our Seneca Heights community in the northern part of the city, which is doing great things to provide permanent housing for formerly homeless families. We talked about effectively ending veteran homelessness in Montgomery County. The way that you read the statistical data is a little tricky because on any given moment, there might be some homeless veterans, but what they call functional or equivalent end to homelessness among veterans has been achieved within Montgomery County, and so that's been a great accomplishment. And in conjunction with both the report And in conjunction with both the report to the Council of Governments and the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless annual gala event, which some of us attended recently, there seems to be a lot of focus now that we've, that we've made a big dent in veteran homelessness on children's homelessness. And so I think the goal over the next couple of years for MCCH and for a lot of us is gonna be to see if we can end children's homelessness in Montgomery County by 2020, which is a big challenge, but a goal that it can be accomplished, is within reach, and so we'll be working towards that and keep everyone posted on that as well. I did want to just offer a shout-out to everyone who was involved in a couple of wonderful events that we've had over the last couple of weeks. La Mia de Mayo, the one-mile race in Old Town Gaithersburg that was organized by the city, by staff, and sponsors and volunteers and participants who came out, even though it was a little bit rainy this year, was really a wonderful turnout and a wonderful event. So I was glad to be able to be there. My kids ran in the tot-trot and had a lot of fun. We had the annual Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce Wine Tasting, which was sponsored in part by the City of Gaithersburg and hosted at our Kentland's Mansion facility, another wonderful event to support economic development and the chamber's work, and also to highlight some of the wonderful eateries and other businesses around the city. So thanks to everyone involved in that event. Was glad to be able to pop, pop in on that event as well. And then finally, this past Friday, the city's Economic Development and Business Committee, which I serve as the formal council liaison to, had a joint meeting with the city's Planning Commission. We believe, I think staff believes, this was the very first ever joint commission slash Economic Development Committee meeting to discuss a, an analysis that was conducted by the Urban Land Institute to look at the First Field Road corridor within the city. I'm sure staff will talk more about that in coming weeks and months, but it was really a very, very interesting and eye-opening analysis. I know Neil was there and others were there, and so glad that we're making progress and looking at that piece of the city and trying to figure out how we can move it to the next level, as we've seen some progress with biotechs, with employment hubs, and with retail hubs in that area. We want to take it to the next level. A couple of events that are coming up this week. I wanted to mention that the monthly meeting of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, in which Gaithersburg is a very active member, is coming up this Thursday. We will have elections for board members and officers at that meeting, and it will be kind of the winding down of my tenure as the president of the chapter over the last couple of years. It's been a great experience, and I hope members of the organization and the public feel that the chapter's been doing a good job on providing some worthwhile value to its members. But I look forward to passing the gavel, so to speak, to the next set of leaders, and we will report back on how the elections went at our next meeting. And then finally, this Friday is Bike to Work Day throughout the region, and the City of Gaithersburg is sponsoring a pit stop. There are dozens of pit stops around the region. For those who either regularly bike to work or who want to give it a try this Friday, we encourage you to do so. The city's pit stop will be at the corner of Great Seneca Highway and Orchard Ridge Drive and Kentland's Boulevard from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. There'll be a DJ, there'll be raffle prizes and refreshments, so as you're on your way biking to work, stop by the pit stop and enjoy some of those refreshments and other prizes that will be there. And we hope to see you there, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll go over to Mike.
Well, Ryan ticked off a bunch of things, but I did want to, again, I ran again this year, the second, in the second annual La Mia de Mayo, so Rob Wu and I ran. Rob finished before I did, but, you know, I got 20 years on him, so. Anyway, it was a great run, great weather, and it was a well-organized, great event. I want to thank our partners, Montgomery County Road Runners Club, who just did a great job with the course. We have a certified measured mile course, so it's gonna become a more and more popular event. This year, we had twice as many as last year, over 300 registered for the event. I don't know how many actually participated in the mile run, but great event. So I want to thank staff and all of our sponsors, and I think this will be a big event coming up in the future for Old Town, so. In addition to some of the things that Ryan mentioned, several of us attended the 20th Anniversary Celebration and Presentation of Character Counts Awards. We awarded, recognized our program supporters and honored our essay photo and poster contest winners, as well as announced the scholarship recipients for the Character Counts program. It's 20 years. I think it's had an impact on the community and on our schools and individually. It's always good when you, you hear from former recipients, so we had one come back who was a recipient in 2009 and is now getting ready to start at law school. He'll be graduating from Penn State very soon. So we're very delighted to have those kind of testimonials, but also to have that particular individual explain to the young, young people in the audience the advantages that they were able to enjoy because of that, that scholarship, so.
He was a very good speaker.
And, yeah, so that was great, and again, congratulations to all the recipients of our awards. Ryan mentioned the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless Gala that, I think the entire council was there, I believe. May 5th, we had, we had the Denim and Diamonds Dinner Dance, which was well-attended, again, to support the Wells Robertson Foundation, House Foundation. So I want to thank the sponsors and the donors for that and all the participants as well, the attendees. Saturday the 6th, the, May has been a busy month, and we're not even halfway through, and there's something coming up really soon. Kentland's Day, May 6th, Saturday morning, Neil and I marched in the parade, and it was a pretty windy day, so I think that had an impact on attendance, but I want to, again, thank the sponsors for that. City was one of the sponsors for that as well, so. On May 8th, Monday, we had the Active Aging Expo at the Activity Center, Borah Park. Again, well-attended. It's nice to see a lot of mature residents of the area, including Gaithersburg, out there enjoying a number of the activities and finding out about services available. And then if you don't have any plans Friday night, you might want to attend the, the performance of the Gaithersburg Community Course, Funny Love, is the spring concert, and that starts at 6:30. I'm sorry, that started at 7:30 on Friday night at Gaithersburg Presbyterian Church at 610 South Frederick Avenue. So hope you have a chance to enjoy that performance. It's a nice, large course and great, so you'll enjoy that. And then there's something happening on Saturday, starts at 10 o'clock here at Griffith Park. I'll leave that to somebody else to explain. It's, it's kind of a big deal here, so. Anyway, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mike, we will move on to Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I won't cover the events that have already been covered in great detail. I would say briefly, the, as Ryan said, the examination by the Urban Land Institute of the potential opportunities for improving the First Field Corridor was, was very informative. And just to give you a quick bit of background, we have a number of office parks that were developed in the 70s and 80s and aren't really the way people build office parks these days, so we're looking at ways to make them better somehow. And they came up with a lot of interesting ideas in terms of making them more walkable, what mixed use might be appropriate, what to do with what's there currently. And as, as the city matures, we've got more and more situations like that, so those are the kinds of things that we want to understand what the best practices are as best we can. Want to take one second. We've already applauded and congratulated the people that were appointed, but I want to single out the three that are still in the room. The rest of the people can take their congratulations as a group, but Paul Havica, Jim Rolfes, and Bill Albright, thanks for signing up. It's been.
And we have one other, Ashley.
Ashley. Oh, Ashley's still here? Okay, sorry. Anyway, we really appreciate you all stepping up, and it's been good to work with all of you in the past, and look forward to working with all of you as we go forward. Let's see, one event that the rest of you weren't at, but I got to go to, was the ribbon cutting for the grand reopening or grand expansion of Lake Forest Sport and Health Club, right near, across from Lake Forest Mall. You know, from the outside, it doesn't look like a very big place, but it's like Doctor Who's Tardis. It's bigger on the inside. As you go in, it just goes on and on and on, and it's also the training facility for the Washington Spirit, which is, I guess, a women's soccer club. They were training while we were there. Judging by their 0- and 3 record, the last I checked, they probably could use the work a little bit more, but I'm sure they'll, they'll get there. One last event I'd like to, like to point out that I had the, the privilege of attending on behalf of the city was Boy Scout Troop 1760's Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Not a very big troop, really, probably about 30 kids. They had five Eagles this year, which is remarkable. Only 4% of all Boy Scouts make it to the Eagle rank, and as someone who spent many years in the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts myself, it was, it's really a major accomplishment. You know, they have to do a lot of projects and work and brave the elements and 21-plus merit badges. Each of the five young men gave a speech, and each of the five, I thought, did a terrific job with their speeches. It was really great to see, and very proud of the young men and their families and their troop for, for all the good work that they did. So once again, congratulations to Troop 1760, and then look forward to future events. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Yvette?
Thank you, Mayor. So I won't go over some of the events that have already been talked about, but I did have the privilege of going to the fairgrounds to do interviews for the 4-H students who are applying for the King and the Queen of the Montgomery County Fair coming up in August. So that was on May 6th, and it was a wonderful afternoon, listening to students doing all kinds of fabulous things. 4-H is a wonderful club, lots of great things going on in that organization. Would love to see more partnership here with us and 4-H. I also got a tour of Manah Food. I probably am like the last person on the planet that hasn't been there, so I just wanted to thank them for all the awesome work that they do for our residents in the county. And finally, I have an announcement about after closed executive session. A closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, May 1st, at approximately 10:35 p.m., pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. The meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B1I, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic discussed was a personal matter to con, to conduct the city manager's annual performance evaluation. That's a mouthful. Present at the meeting were Mayor Ashman, council members Harris, Monroe, Spiegel, and Sesma. City staff were present, were city attorney board and city manager Thomasello, who left at 11:03 p.m. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the closed executive meeting was adjourned at approximately 11:10 p.m., when you guys were all asleep. That's all I have.
Thank you, Yvette. I want to thank everybody for, for everything they had to say. I want to associate myself with all the comments and add just one little additional congratulations to Michelle and her staff for the La Mia de Mayo event, which, which despite some rain, was actually, was, was a terrific event, and so looking forward to seeing that event grow. Obviously, this, this Saturday is the book festival. I just wanted to say, you know, I remember sort of being at this dais seven years ago when our first, we were about to launch the first one, and there's, there's a certain moment of sort of, of excitement of all the planning that's gone into this, to recruit all these authors and to, you know, figure out who's gonna be in hotels and who's, you know, who needs what and cater to all these. It's, it's, we, we treat it like one event, but it's really like 100 events that happen within an eight-hour period. And, and so it's, I just want to take a quick moment in advance to, to thank the committee, the staff, particularly Parks and Rec, but all of our staff is, is involved in it at this point, including public works, including police, including IT. Virtually every, in every department, there are people who have volunteered to be part of the book festival, to introduce authors or, or just to come and enjoy it, and I, I'm very grateful for all of the support that I've gotten from everybody up here and everybody out there, and looking forward to what I, it's a spectacular lineup of authors and programs this year. And for anybody who hasn't been, or anybody who'd like to return, all details are at gaithersburgbookfestival.org. It is free to attend, free to park. Follow us on Twitter and find us on Facebook, and you'll, you'll be inundated, no doubt, with, with great info to sort of pique your interest for various programs. It's, it's just gonna be spectacular. So I'm not gonna comment on the weather. I'm asked to comment about the weather a few times each day, and I will say that I, I check the weather about three times a day at this point. It will increase between now and Saturday, but I won't, I won't comment on it.
How's the weather gonna be?
You have to just look at weather.com. I will say, I will say that next Monday, our work session topic will be small cell facilities. I know there's a lot of interest in this community about small cells, so we are sort of making progress on, or trying to make progress on how the city handles small cell applications, so you'll want to be a part of our work session next Monday, May 22nd. May 29th, we will not conduct a work session due to the observance of Memorial Day. The next regular meeting of mayor and council will be on Monday, June 5th, right here, 7:30 p.m. in City Hall. And next, we have from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of smaller project CIP updates. The entranceway to Casey Community Center will be partially closed for the next few days as we reinstall the fountain that worked in front of there for many years. It's been dry as it was not able to be repaired previously, but the contractors will be there this week, and we hope to have the fountain back in operation in the next couple of weeks. So it'll look really nice back in front of Casey. The much-discussed cycle track slash dog, dedicated lane along Quinns Orchard Pike was put out to bid for design today, so that one is moving forward as well. And then finally, on the budget, as you know, you get a list of subsequent changes to the budget, which tend to be the additions and subtractions from the expenditure accounts. But we have been meeting as a group, Finance and Dennis and myself, on the revenue side as well, which is comparatively unusual. There'll be a number of changes. Revenue projections are really late-breaking this year, and several of them are up enough to actually adjust the budget, which is great, but we will, that will reduce somewhat the reappropriation number that you'll see later. And we, it also, I believe empowers us, we're, we're gonna add an additional position that was not in the draft budget, an IT project person. So you'll see all that on a comprehensive list and an explanation of changes to the revenue and expenditure in the CIP, as opposed to just the one pager on expenditures this year.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Economic Development Update. Tom Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Couple of quick items. This Thursday, economic development staff will be attending the Maryland Governors Business Summit in Baltimore. Don't know if you've heard about this. It's touted as bringing together Maryland business, education, and community leaders to focus on key issues issuing the state economy, including innovation, entrepreneurship, the global economy, and human capital. The all-day event will feature networking, breakout sessions, remarks by the governor, and notable speakers, including the Ravens head coach and Marriott CEO, Arne Sorensen. This Sunday, we'll be traveling a little bit further to Las Vegas for the International Council of Shopping Center, ICSC's 2017 Recon Retail Convention, widely considered the world's largest real estate retail convention. 37,000 attendees, 1,200 exhibitors, dozens of sessions on the state of retail, including panels hosted by locals such as Heather Arnold from Streetscape, a street sentence rather, and Gary Rappaport from Rappaport Real Estate, and somehow the keynote addressed by Serena Williams, but still looking forward to it. Plan, of course, is to learn more about the latest in retail, to make some new connections, and to highlight some potential specific opportunities here in the city, particularly in Old Town and along the 355 corridor. Thanks to all of you for allowing me to attend on your behalf. And finally, next Monday, the 22nd, we are officially breaking ground in the new Park Plaza here in Old Town. The Plaza- The plaza project could take up to six months. Work will be between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and the first step will be the temporary full closure of the surface parking lot at the corner of Diamond and Summit Avenue. Last week, a map with alternative parking sites was distributed by Economic Development Staff to nearby businesses who universally expressed excitement and appreciation for the project. Thanks again to all of you for the support of this critical project as well. We're excited.
Tom, quick question. Do we have a booth at the convention? Or are you, or are we sharing one with the county?
No, no, no.
You're just going to be in attendance?
I'm in attendance and visiting with particular retailers that are on site there. The state does have a booth, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. Frank Johnson, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As announced, I'm Frank Johnson, and I'm presenting to you a new revised draft of an ordinance to amend Section 194 of the City Code entitled Riding or Driving Bicycles, Vehicles, et cetera, on the Streets. That section now entirely prohibits riding a bicycle on the sidewalk with wheels that are twenty inches or larger, or a motorcycle, or any other similar type of vehicle. The intent is to allow, limited allowance, for a bicycle and other non-motorized vehicles on the sidewalk with some pedestrian protections, and also allowing the City Manager the ability to impose some limitations in certain areas. We've had a couple of proposals here. We had a public hearing earlier this year on what were some specific definitions that were included. That's where we started from, laying out what are some specific, what are known as EPAMDs, electronic personal assisted mobility devices, looking at county law and state law. And then also, when you allow more uses, there does become the need to, where are the limits going to be? What empowerments do we want to make sure the city has? And we found that we really didn't for things like skateboards, other devices, et cetera. So, we went back and thought, is there a simple way, perhaps using broader language, that would encompass what we're trying to do without creating language that, in so many definitions, that ends up working against each other? And because the actual active parts of the ordinance were not that terribly complicated, it really was the long definitions and then trying to get into every detail. So, we did create two options, looked at a number of different ordinances statewide, not only statewide, but nationwide, where in many places, they won't say bicycle with a specific-sized tire or lay out every detail. They will simply say bicycle. Same for motorcycle. And that's, our current code refers to bicycle that has the twenty-inch limit, but motorcycle just says motorcycle, and that is what many other ordinances do as well. So, we decided to create a simple ordinance that simply lays out what the three purposes are, but using language that is broad enough that we believe addresses some of the concerns that have been raised, yet in a language that is broad enough to cover what is needed. In other words, give the City Manager the ability to impose the restrictions either across the board or in certain areas, on all vehicles or certain types, and go from there. That's what it seemed like we were looking for. We presented this to the Transportation Committee to get their input. After all, we've been here enough to get your input. Thought to include them as well. And I've presented the more specific option and the simple option, and their recommendation was to opt for the simple option. So, that's what's before you tonight, and our, covers the same allowances just using the broader language, that sometimes lawyers can come up with something more, more simple when we try. And if it is your desire to introduce it, that's what we recommend. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Frank, thank you very much. This is attempt number three, I believe, at this...
I think so, yes.
And I look forward to the comments of my colleagues to see if we have, if we've gotten there or not. Neil, go ahead.
Well, as the liaison to the Transportation Committee and having been through this many times, this is, this makes life much easier for us. The other definition, as you said, you know, as you tried to craft language that was extremely specific, there popped up exceptions, and it made things very convoluted. This is, this is much more straightforward, and you have the blessing of the Transportation Committee as well as myself on this. I think it's, you know, I think it's very appropriate. You know, given that the City Manager has the right to say that in certain parts of the city, sidewalks won't accommodate these vehicles, every, most parts of the city, the sidewalks aren't that widely used, and as long as, as in this ordinance, says that people, that people on wheeled vehicles essentially have to give the right-of-way to people on foot, then everything, everyone should be able to get along and work well. And get, get vehicles like bicycles off the streets when it's safer to be on a sidewalk or some sidewalk-like area. So, I think this is exactly the right direction. I'm very pleased to see us get here finally.
So, the one question I had, and I agree, this is much improved and much easier, both for us up here and for the public, I think, and for the people who would have to enforce this. So, the only question I had is, I don't see where a Segway fits into this. Now, I don't know what's happened to Segways, whether they're still going to be around, but they are still around. So, it's not necessarily a mobility aid used for handicapped, but it is a motorized vehicle that would use a sidewalk, and I don't see where it fits into the definition. I just want to make sure that that's in, that's part of the definition. Am I missing? Well, the definitions of different vehicle types are actually in a different section. That hasn't been modified.
Right.
So, we provided some other definitions here under A, so it's pretty...
Yeah.
You know, so I don't want, I understand that there's definitions elsewhere, but we've also provided some very specific definitions under A, 194A. So, I just want to make sure that we're not excluding one, or that one hasn't been included.
The only, the only exception that's in subsection A now would be the children's toys or the mobility aid, if there was a desire to. That's not difficult to add that?
Well, if it's in the other, if it's in the other area, section where we have the definitions of what these vehicles are, I guess that's the question. So, I think, is it easier to put it in and perhaps take it out once we find out that it's not?
It would be, it would, as an allowance, even after a public hearing, that's not adding additional restrictions. But in terms of clarity, there'd certainly be no harm, if that's your desire, to add it in before we go out to public comment.
Oh, I'm suggesting it, you know. I want to make sure that it was covered. You know, there was a time when our officers were equipped with Segways. You know, there's Segway tours all over the region, historic areas. We have historic areas, suppose somebody wants to start a Segway business.
Yeah, we get it.
So, I think, so that's my point. That's all. I didn't see it.
Go ahead.
So, as a procedural question, is that something that broadens or restricts the scope of the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, that's, that's why I raised it.
Right? So, that it's something that we could raise later without necessarily raising it tonight at the introduction phase?
Well, I mean, I think just to ensure that we are safe here, that if that's something that the council would like us to pursue, that in the introduction, in the motion to introduce, there should be language as part of the motion to include the ability to have Segways on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then we can redraft the language for the public hearing.
I'd like to see it.
That's why I'm raising it now. If they don't agree, if, you know, my colleagues don't agree, that doesn't...
Do we have any objections to Segways?
I don't have any objection to including it in the introduction, bearing in mind that we will have public input and opportunity for discussion to decide whether or not it should be in the final ordinance. But I, I'm not making a decision right now about whether it should be in the final ordinance.
Oh, well, I'm not either. I'm just suggesting that it's missing.
Neil, Yvette? Okay.
I haven't seen any Segways around the city lately, but I know the Segway lobby has been furiously tweeting tonight, so...
One other change, since we're making the one change, just in looking at subsection B, it specifies that vehicles who aren't prohibited, including bicycles and electric bikes, can be operated. And when it talks about the audible signal and must at all times yield the right-of-way, it just says "but shall." There should be the word "but the operator's," operator or operator shall. That should be added in there. So, I just want to make sure to add that word so that the sentence reads as a sentence.
In other words, otherwise, we're telling an inanimate object that it has to give an audible signal?
I think it would be interpreted the same way, but for the sake of clarity, yes.
All right. Well, while we're at it, then, I think we should also, there's, it looks like there's an extra word "shall" in subsection B-A1 at the end, right after the word pedestrian. I think that's just a typo. See that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That may have reflected the way that was drafted at one point, so.
See, we're just trying to make sure that we don't have to have a fourth introduction of this ordinance, so we're trying to cover all the bases here, I think.
All right.
All right.
I will move the introduction of the ordinance with the amendments discussed, which include in Section A, accept conventional children's toys, comma, Segways, comma, or a mobility aid used, et cetera. And the change that in Section B-A, after the word "but," it should say, it should say, "but the operator shall." After, in Section B-A1, it should say, "first give an audible signal when overtaking a pedestrian," and the word "shall" after pedestrian shall be deleted. And then I'll also offer, even though I didn't raise this earlier, in Section C, after it says "the City Manager or," I would insert the words "his or her" before the word "designee," unless anybody has any strong objection.
There's no reason not to have it.
We actually, in drafting other ordinances, for instance, there were a number that were brought up dealing with our permitting process and bonds and all of that. The "his or her" came up there, I think, twenty-six or twenty-seven times. And the current way we have been referring to it is simply to say "City Manager or Designee." We have not added the "his or her." Certainly your preference, but...
All right. As a grammatical purist, I have a little bit of an issue with that because it doesn't, there's no pronoun referencing who the designee is for, but that's fine. We all understand it.
What are the options aside from his and her?
There's nothing. No, "their" isn't correct.
"Their" would be improper.
That's okay. I'll withdraw it because I think we all understand that. So, I'll withdraw that last change.
Start the motion again.
No.
Well, the motion that my colleague just made, I will second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any pose. Okay. That carries unanimously, and we are ready to introduce. Okay.
And thank you all for your patience as we have had to come back, but we'll get it right.
Thank you, Frank. Kevin Roman, Neighborhood Services Division Chief. Talk about potential tenant protection laws.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, before I begin the PowerPoint slide tonight, I want to provide some background on the city's rental housing program and Montgomery County's Bill 1915 that was recently enacted. Chapter 13 of the City Code governs landlord-tenant relations. It establishes the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs as a means to resolve disputes between landlords and tenants. It also provides requirements on landlords and tenants' obligations, general leasing practices, and mandatory lease provisions applicable to all residential properties in the city. Additionally, City Code, Chapter 18AA, establishes a licensing program in which all rental properties must attain a city license and be inspected to ensure the property is maintained up to current code standards. The inspections are performed at least once every two years, or as often as needed, to ensure compliance with the City Code. So far, so for the history, so for the history on Bill 1915, the county created a tenant work group in 2008 because of expressed concerns of questionable leasing practices, unreasonable rent increases, and declining conditions of rental properties. The tenant work group published a report in 2010 in which fifty recommendations were made to improve the quality of life and housing conditions for renters. Subsequently, in 2015, Bill 1915 was introduced to address some of the concerns outlined in the tenant work group report. The bill went through a number of modifications and added amendments during the next year, and was finally enacted in November 2016 and became effective in March 2017. So, the bill provides enhancement to existing tenants' rights, lease provisions, requirements, general leasing practices, and improving the quality of rental housing stock through increased inspections. And on that note, I previously provided the Mayor and Council a memo that expressed that the inspection component of Bill 1915 would not be beneficial as we have a much more manageable ratio of rental units compared to Montgomery County. In the city, we have approximately 12,500 rental properties. That includes multifamily and single-family. This allows our inspectors to get into every unit at least once every two years. Therefore, tonight's review will focus on selected highlights of Bill 1915 outside of the inspection component that will potentially provide additional tenant protections to city residents. So, again, the purpose is to enhance the rights of the tenants and improve the quality of rental housing through increased inspections. The bill amendments are generally related to three categories. That's leases and landlord-tenant obligations, licensing, which includes that inspection component, and data collections, and tenants' rights. The landlord, getting into the leases and landlord-tenant obligations, the landlord is responsible to provide a copy of the landlord-tenant handbook, or if the tenant agrees, he can be referred to an electronic copy maintained on the website. The handbook provides an in-depth information on the landlord-tenant relationship, including but not limited to lease agreements, notice requirements, and handling of the security deposits. Additionally, as leases are legal contracts and sometimes difficult to understand, landlords must provide a plain language summary of the lease, providing the minimum information, including the lease term, rental rate, rental due date, and utility responsibilities. And also must contain a summary of the tenant's rights and responsibilities under the lease, and that services are provided by the housing authority and the Office of Landlord-Tenant Affairs. The final condition on this slide is that the landlords must offer a two-year option at the initial lease term, which is already current code, but must also offer a two-year option at lease renewal, which was new.
So, Kevin, just to, just to go back, this is, we're talking about the county amendments to the county law here?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And continuing with the leases and landlord-tenant obligations, except in the cases of breach of leasing, landlord must provide sixty-day notice to vacate at the expiration of the lease term. This makes a lot of sense, as there are some leases that only require a thirty-day notice to vacate. And as you can imagine, this creates a burden and a hardship on a tenant if they are to locate new housing, pack, and move within a thirty-day period. Another one that makes sense is requiring a ninety-day notice to, a ninety-day notice of rent increase. Previously, landlords were required to give sixty-days' notice of rent increase. This was problematic as tenants were also required to provide sixty-day notice to vacate if they were not going to renew. Therefore, the tenants would have to make an immediate decision to accept the rent increase. Requiring, now requiring the ninety-day notice now provides tenants at least thirty days to make a sound decision. And on to utility billing. For each unit in a building constructed before July 1st, 1978, and for which units are not individually metered, housing providers must provide tenants with all information required under the Public Utilities Article of the Maryland Code and applicable COMAR provisions, which is the Code of Maryland, regulations, provisions governing A, the electric and gas sub-metered, and B, all energy allocation systems.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Was that date significant, and what happens?
Because currently, it's required for buildings that were built after 1978. Continuing, this, this next slide expands the reasons beyond a tenant's control that a lease can be terminated early. It's being a victim of domestic abuse, landlord violating privacy rights, tenant or spouse no longer being able to live in... tenant or spouse no longer being able to live independently, and a tenant being incarcerated or declared mentally incompetent. On to licensing and data collection. This is what I call the housing standards. This is the one exception to the inspection component that may be beneficial. This would allow a tenant to coordinate repairs on outstanding health and safety violations previously cited by inspectors. The repairs would have to be approved in writing by the city and performed by licensed contractors. The tenant then would be able to deduct up to one month's rent for the cost of the repairs. Moving on to tenants' rights. The landlord must allow a tenant organization to use meeting space if such space is available. And the first meeting on the, the first meeting of each month must be free. The current city code provides for the use of available space, although the landlord is allowed to charge a reasonable fee. The next item requires the landlord to post a sign on the property indicating how and to whom tenants can file a housing or landlord-tenant complaint. And finally, this provision would provide the Commission on Landlord-Tenant, the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs authority to order a tenant to correct a condition that creates a defective tenancy and evade the tenant's rent in an amount up to three months' rent. And I wanted to close by stating, while it may be appropriate to allow time to evaluate how effective some of these changes work out for Montgomery County, I do believe several of the amendments are long overdue, and it makes sense to swiftly get these much-needed protections in place. And with that, I'm looking for guidance and.
Well, so, thank you, Kevin. So what you've just given us are elements of what the county has just done.
That's correct.
But I don't see a, I'm not clear on the recommendation for what you'd like us to do for the city. Or is it everything that you just named?
Pretty much everything that I just made, with the priorities being the early termination provisions mentioned, the plain language summary of the lease, the sixty-day notice to vacate at lease expiration, ninety-day notice for the rent increase, and providing tenants' information on how the utility bills are calculated, and expanding the authority of the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs.
And so if we agree, then what would happen is?
What I want to do is come back and introduce the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, go ahead. So is there a provision for a tenant requesting an inspection about to determine whether a violation exists?
We do proactive inspections already as part of the licensing procedure. But absolutely, if we get a complaint from a tenant, we will perform another inspection. And if the violation is cited, then we'll take.
So that's already, that's already in our.
That's already in place. That's correct.
And then, I just lost the other train that I had.
It's okay, we can go to those.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
I just, following up on what the mayor said, I think it might be helpful at some point. You had this memo from December, which was very helpful because it had this great chart sort of comparing the county to the city. And your presentation tonight was, you know, very good going through sort of line by line, but I think as a, sort of as a visual aid to this discussion, it might help to add a third, take that chart from the December memo and add a third column and say, okay, now, here's what Montgomery County's law says, here's what Gaithersburg's law currently says, and here's what we staff are saying from our presentation, are recommending we focus on this item, we add this, we add this, we add this, not currently addressing this, add this, don't add this, whatever. Just because it will sort of take that data from your presentation tonight and give us a better format for sort of understanding where we're saying we need to fill gaps and where we're saying we don't necessarily need to. As Kevin well knows, he and I have had a number of conversations about this issue writ large over the last several months, and I've had some conversations with Tony about it too, so I'm really glad to see that we are doing this now. I think the vast majority of this stuff is necessary for us. I mean, we're not getting too much into the weeds right now about precise language on some of these requirements for the city, and we will. But I'm glad we're advancing the ball on this generally because I do think we need to keep up the pace with some of these protections that the county has moved forward with. I'm not saying that I necessarily agree with every single one.
Might remind the public why the county did this, started moving forward on some of these changes for tenant protection. Has to do with the gas explosion at the apartment building in Silver Spring.
That's right.
In which tenants had complained for more than months, probably over a couple of years about gas leaks and things like that.
And some of the protections that the county has been working on instituting are things that we already have in the state of Gaithersburg. And I think it's worth mentioning that to the public as well. So there were some things that we were far ahead of the county on, and now there are some things now that they've, you know, updated their laws that they're a little bit ahead of us on. And I think we need to find that happy medium while still staying in the, at the forefront without making too many burdens on tenants or landlords. We need to stay at the forefront of these issues, and, you know, I think that's what staff is trying to do, so I'm glad this is here. I generally agree with the recommendations, but I think we need to kind of have an opportunity to drill down into the specifics of the language and which recommendations we're actually looking to pursue and which not, which I think staff will provide for us and prepare when we go to introduction.
I'd like to second that. I agree entirely with Ryan's request for the documentation. I think we're probably, we're probably ready to move forward with that, the sort of the broadest general recommendations from staff, and then if we want to narrow it down after introduction, then we can do that. Lynn, correct?
That would be the.
Want to make sure once I'll leave them around too. Neil Avett, do you want to, do you have questions or comments? All right.
I remember where it was. So under obligation, the landlord was to provide a plain language summary.
Yes.
Okay, how many languages are we going to require that to be provided?
The county, I believe, is, they're actually, you're providing five.
Five, right. Okay. So that would be a good place to start.
The county, the county does English, Spanish, French, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Korean. And I know you say in your memo that staff was working to have ours translated into Spanish, but nothing else yet at this point.
That's correct.
Okay. That might be worth looking at.
Yeah, let's look at the.
Some other languages.
I do believe in the, reviewing the financial impact statement from the county, I think they projected it would cost about thirty-five hundred dollars to have that translated in each language. Just wanted to.
Thirty-five hundred per language?
Thirty-five hundred per language.
And it would be incumbent on the landlord to get it translated, no?
I believe this, the county actually performed that.
The county provides that service?
It's a standard form though, right?
Yeah, it's a standard lease form.
It's a standard lease form, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's not.
So if the city could translate it one time into one language and then make it available to all landlords to use.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, the cost of translation services each time, each time somebody needed to do this would pretty soon make this economically feasible.
All right. So do you feel guided, Kevin?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Alimon Power, Engineering Services Division Chief. Talk about our bus shelter agreement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the bus shelter advertising program. I presented a letter to the mayor and council, but I think I'd like to go over some of the items for people that don't have the memo and eventually get to the part where there's a couple of items I want to get feedback from. One of the transportation strategies in our strategic directions is to reduce automobile dependence by facilitating automobile transportation options. Key way to do this is by the extension of the bus shelter program. One way to accomplish this is by continuing our private sector-funded bus shelter program. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the background of the program, some market research, the current state of the program, and then come to you with some questions. The background, for those of you that have been here for a while, this was part of a ten-year agreement with Signal Outdoor. They had exclusive rights to install advertising bus shelters throughout the city. As, as part of this, the contractor provided all cleanings, snow removal, trash pickup, and repairs to all of the bus shelters. In addition, they were responsible for trash pickup at a maximum of two hundred bus stops without shelters. And right now, we're not even close to that number of stops. We probably have a little bit over two hundred stops in the city, but not all of those have trash cans. Contractor pays a fee to the city equal to ten percent of the advertising receipts. In the city currently, there's fifty-plus advertising shelters, and this ends up providing revenue to the city in the amount up to twenty-one thousand dollars a year. At this point, the original contract has expired. Both parties are operating under a month-to-month contract that extends the terms of the original agreement. If the contract truly comes to an end, ownership of the existing shelters will revert back to the city. The ad portion would come down. They would put a traditional end to the shelters, and they would be our property. Our contractors approached the city about extending the contract. As part of preliminary discussions, they proffered to construct an additional twenty-four shelters over a three-year period. They also talked about a change in compensation, and it would really depend on what we want in the way of service levels, if that compensation would go up, down, or stay neutral. Some of the conversations we've had over a couple of years, both internally for ourselves and with the contractor, includes priority snow removal for high occupancy bus stops, as well as the need for increased trash pickup in certain areas. We're struggling right now. It's not really the trash from the bus shop, from the bus stops, but in a couple of locations throughout the city, there's a lot of household trash that goes in those locations. So we're working with Neighborhood Services to try to control that. We're putting some notices on the bus stops to educate residents of that too. But I think ultimately, if those aren't as effective as we'd like to be, we may have to go to increased trash collection in those areas. So Signal Outdoor, they're seeking a fifteen-year extension. Agreements in this area range from ten to twenty years. I know that Washington DC has a twenty-year agreement with their contractor. As part of this, we did some market research to see what was going on with other locations, and we found out, for example, Frederick County put out a solicitation three different times without receiving any bids. Ultimately, they piggybacked on an existing contract with Fairfax, Virginia to move forward. Couple of years ago, Annapolis moved forward to solicit a new vendor for their contracts. When they did that, the original contractor removed all the bus shelters in the city. So Annapolis was shelterless for more than a year. They eventually worked out a new contract, and in the end, only a small percentage of the original shelters returned.
That couldn't happen here.
No. As I said, as I said earlier, there are shelters if it gets. Whoever wrote that.
That's a horror story.
Rockville put a similar solicitation out to what we were talking about, and they had one response to the solicitation. The contract for less than half the shelters requested, and no trash pickup except locations where they had the shelter locations. So there appears to be four players in the market. Signal Outdoor, they are existing contractor. They have, they have contracts with Gaithersburg, Tacoma Park, Fairfax, Virginia, and a number of other local markets. Just for what we're looking for, I would say that they appear to be the best fit for the city if you want to continue to move forward with the existing way we do business. Clear channel contracts in larger markets such as Washington DC and Montgomery County. We've not had discussions with them recently, but in the past, they were not interested in pursuing local advertising, which we do a lot of in the city. They were not interested in doing the Gaithersburg-style shelters, and they weren't interested in doing trash collection. Creative Outdoor Advertising's main interest appears to be in other street furnitures, not ad shelters. In both Rockville and Annapolis, they agreed to do shelters if you took all their street furniture. But as I said previously, they didn't, they generally did less shelters than what the municipality wanted, and they also did not do any trash collection.
So what kind of street furniture would they do besides?
They do, they do trash cans, benches with advertise them on them. So a lot of it is recycled materials. They'll put it up, but almost any furniture, almost anything they do, they want exclusive rights, and they want advertising on it. And they originally started out, I can tell you from doing this for a while, they originally started out without doing shelters, but in my, in my mind, the only way they could get into certain places was by including the shelters in with it. Fourth company is Direct Media USA. They've been awarded the exclusive rights to operate the MTA Bus Shelter Advertising Program in Baltimore. I believe they're a little similar to Clear Channel. They're looking to serve larger municipalities. Right-of-way issues aren't something that we need to get into now, but we are having difficulties getting bus shelters on the state right-of-way. There's a number of hoops that you have to jump through to do that, and those have not been clearly defined. So going to the guidance portion, the major thing that we're looking for is how we move forward with the program. And I believe there's three choices. One is the extension of the existing contract where some of the items that we talked about, the length of the contract, number of shelters, the amount of money we get back, those items are negotiated. Second one is we do a new solicitation where contract terms similar to the first would be included. And then the third is perform this work in-house, and I gave you some basic numbers for that. It would cost about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the twenty-four shelters, a one-time cost of about sixty-five thousand dollars for a truck, and about eighty thousand dollars a year in personnel costs. From public works standpoint, obviously, we don't think the third is a good recommendation. Either one of the first two would be okay from our standpoint. I believe from looking at market research, most places have not had a lot of success in doing new contracts. So I think public works recommendation would be to see if we can negotiate an existing, continue to extend the existing contract. Couple of other items I wanted to talk about as part of our discussion is one of the things that we get asked about is the continuation of the Gaithersburg prototype shelter. They've been around for probably twenty-plus years now. At the very beginning, when they did this, that was an absolute that the shelters had to be that design. And I don't know what the council's feelings are on that at this time. As I talked about, I believe that we should take a close look at the trash collection, do some increased trash collection at these locations. And the final one was the length of the service contract. Signal Outdoor is seeking fifteen years, and as I said, we've gone from ten to twenty. So I can go through the items one by one if you want and try to get some feedback, or?
Well, let's see, you've given us a lot here, and we appreciate it and all the research that you've done. So I guess I'll start with a question. Is there a downside to going out to bid?
If you go, if you go out to bid, you run the risk of no one bidding on it, and that has happened in some cases. Whether that would happen or not, because Signal Outdoor already has a vested interest in the city, that would ultimately be up to them to decide. But that would be, I've just seen that many companies have had difficulties in fulfilling the contracts. I'm sorry, not many companies, many cities.
So, I mean, I think what the mayor's saying is, you know, if we were to try and do that, and then it's true that nobody bids on it, what have we lost other than a little bit of time and administrative, you know, time for staff to have to put out an RFP? And then, and then we can sort of go back to option A of negotiating with the existing vendor, and at least we can satisfy our consciences that we've gone through, you know, a competitive bidding process, right? I mean, that's, that's the question. I mean, that's kind of where I am. I mean, unless there's a huge downside risk to going through the RFP process, my feeling is that for good government reasons, we should just do it. And if we don't get any responses, then we'll just go to being able to negotiate with our current vendor. Unless there's some sort of, you know, really negative scenario that plays out, like some other bidder comes out of nowhere and, you know, and is the lowest bid, but, you know, they have to change out or add a different design of bus shelters, you know, to all the new locations in the city, whether that's really a nightmare scenario or not, I guess it's.
Not for me.
It's a matter of taste, but are there any other big, you know, potential downsides to us going through the RFP process that anybody can think of? Other than, again, you know, just the. that anybody can think of, other than, again, you know, just the, the time of staff to have to deal with the administrative burden of it? If not, then I would say we should just do that.
I agree. And, and I will say, just to reiterate, I don't, I'm not married to the current shelter design. If there's something better, I'm certainly open to it. You know, design standards and, and tastes evolve over the years, and, and maybe it's time to relook at that, but.
And you'd be okay with, if they came back with a new style shelter, mixing the old and the new together?
Yeah. Yeah, as long, we, we could sort of make it long-term where we, we convert them over to the new ones as.
Yeah, so we have one style that I, that irritates me, and it doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, it, you know, the shelter has some dimensions, but then the placement of the walls kind of, of the shelter kind of reduce the dimension that actually provides shelter to the people who would use it. So I, I wouldn't mind seeing some new designs or some existing designs that would be available to us. I think the fact that we have some, have some investment, there are a number of locations where I think we need shelters, where I believe we need shelters, that we don't have them now. And we're definitely locations where we need trash pickup, so certainly I'm not wedded to that. I, I do believe, just in the entrance of transparent, transparency and the, and the process, that, that we should put it out to bid. I, I anticipate that we'll have a similar outcome as, as Rockville has seen and Frederick, so, you know, but we've had this contract with Signal for a long time. I presume that they still want our business, so they'd, they'd be one of the bidders, I assume, so. And if we had others, then that could work, work out either way. But I, I think in terms of the other specifics, have to put that in the RFP, I guess we'd have to figure out where we'd go on the RFP, but.
Would the, would you be okay with the longer term of the contract, up to twenty years? What happens with that? That provides them the ability to be more aggressive in the items that they give you because they have a longer term contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
That would be no problem for me.
Assuming that sort of all the usual, you know, protections apply, like, you know, it's, it's really twenty-one-year contracts with an option.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, that's fine with me.
Neil Yvette, any comments?
I would like to see it go out for bid.
Yeah, I think going out for bid makes sense, and with the, you, you made me a little nervous when you talked, talking about twenty years because we don't know what the standard for this sort of thing will be, or what buses will look like in twenty years.
They may hover.
I, I wouldn't bet on hovering, but at any rate, you know, given the.
They may need bigger shelters.
Well, given the changes in, in transportation technology, electric cars, autonomous vehicles and things like that, we just don't know what will be, so I'd hate to get locked into something that may be obsolete before it's time, but as long as there's an exit.
There's an exit.
That's fine.
There'll be an exit.
Yeah, I think going out for bid and seeing, seeing if we can get somewhere.
We'll call that the Blade Runner Clause, if it, if it becomes Blade Runner here.
I'm still not betting on hovering, but.
Okay, do you feel guided?
I do, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything from any other staff? Dennis, I saw you move up. City Attorney, go ahead.
I had just one, one item tonight. Bill, maybe where we have an election coming up on November seventh, the candidate, we have, the mayor's position to our, of our council positions will be open. Candidate packets will be available on June second, and those will be available both online and paper copies will be available for pickup at City Hall. I want to announce that because that's before our next formal council meeting.
June one.
June second.
June second, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, great. Dennis?
That's earlier than we've done before.
The board supervisors moved it up by a month, yeah. The packets are actually, will actually be due September twenty-second.
Okay. I just had three items related to the task orders that we issued. Remember, under our A and E, or Architectural and Engineering Services, we signed a, a year contract, and then I come back to you and tell you what we've approved recently. The first one is for the design of the park at the Consumer Protection Safety Commission site, which is to floor a teater. This is for seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. This is for the actual construction documents and the design. They do have a number of subs that are working with them in terms of working on stormwater, engineering for the road that actually leads into it. That's why the cost is a little bit higher than you would normally see, so they have quite a bit of an extensive task order related to that.
Do we have sort of final, final design for, for that?
No, that's what they'll be working on.
They'll be working on it and then presenting it to, to us?
To you before we go back out for bid again. We will make some tweaks from the initial concept designs, just like we do for most of our projects, so we'll bring that back to you before we actually send it out for bid.
The expected date?
I do not off the top of my head. I think we're just initially doing the kickoff here next week, so we'll have a better idea after that date. The second one is related to one of the other bigger projects that we have, which is the police station. We have hired SETI and Associates to help us be the owner's architect. This is kind of a two-phase process with SETI. The initial one is for eighty-four thousand and twenty dollars. They will be providing services during the design of the building in terms of doing plan review check and a couple of other things and helping us through the process. The second component, if we're happy with their services, will be for two, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand and sixteen dollars, and that will actually be for construction management during the construction of the police station. We really don't have sufficient staff to have somebody on staff at the police station, and given the scope and complexity of this project, we really need somebody there every day, and so those would be for those services. We are still within budget on both of those projects. And then the final one is for thirteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars. It's for Triad. They're actually doing some design work for us related to the Old Town Youth Center, related for grading and other issues. We have some flooding that's coming in the back door and we need to correct that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anything from any other staff? Not seeing anything, okay. As I mentioned before, next week's work session is Small Cell, and then the following week, we do not have a work session. Our next, the next regular meeting of the mayor and city council will be on Monday, June fifth. Hope to see everybody at the book festival. Until then, let's do great things Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.